August the first, 2023. I'd like to say thank you all for coming. And also, if you did not sign in and you want to speak tonight, please sign in at the front as you enter. The firefighters will be glad to direct you if you did not see the table and sign in if you'd like to speak tonight. Councilman Jackson is not here tonight. He is representing the city of Gochee in something he's very passionate about. He is on the phone participating now. So he is in attendance, but he is in Moss Point on the riverfront at the district attorney. Angel Meyer-McGraw is hosting an event, National Night Out Against Crime. So he is there representing the city of Gochee, volunteering his time in his industry and DJing. So all the children and youth are having a great time over in the river city that represents all of Jackson County. Also, our police department is there representing us, and they have a tent and partnering. It was a joint effort between the county and all the cities. So thank all that are volunteering. Chief, we thank you for allowing, and Deputy Chief, your staff and the city manager to go over there. Please silence your cell phones and all electronic devices. Please stand for the prayer by Reverend Blanks of New Era Baptist Church located on Highway 90 in Gochee, Mississippi, and the pledge by Councilman College.
Please fill me in the pledge.
[Inaudible] United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman College, and thank you Reverend Blanks. That brings us to our agenda order approval. Do we have any changes, Ms. Jancy? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda order? Motion by Councilman Gillette. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Announcements by Ms. Yexey, our city manager.
Gochee's farmers market will be held the second Saturday every month from May to September, starting at 8:00 a.m. until 12:00 p.m. at George Martin City Park. The Gochee youth football registration is now open for flag, tackle, and cheer for ages five through 12. Contact our Gochee Recreation Athletics Department for more details. And Tasty Thursday will be August 24th, starting at 11:00 a.m. at the former St. Louis Mall property.
Thank you, Ms. Jancy. We don't have a presentation agenda. That brings us to our business agenda item number one. Approval of change order number one, summary final pay application certificate of substantial completion and other closeout documents for the Seacloes subdivision road improvements project by our Kim Sosha, our projects and grants manager director.
Mayor, I would like to take this one over.
Okay. That would be our engineer, Mark Seymour.
The project ended real well. I think the concrete looks good. We were fortunate to have a good contractor. We had a real close conversation with the residents out there. These are the kind of change orders I'd like to present when they come in the building. So we're just ready to close it out. Get the contractors on.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number one? No? Do we have a motion by council to approve change order number one, final pay application certificate of substantial completion and other closeout documents for the Seacloes subdivision road improvement project? Motion by Councilman Gillette. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College. Any discussion, starting with Councilman George? Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman Gillette?
I want to congratulate the contractor that did this job. They did an unbelievable job. If everybody looks at this thing, they come under budget and they did it, what, two weeks earlier? With 12 people out there every day. And I can't imagine how they did that as quick as they did because they took out this much concrete, that much dirt, and then put it back. And they did how many panels? About 230 pans of concrete within the subdivision. So I have to again congratulate them for a job well done.
Thank you, Councilman Gillette. Councilman College?
It's just good to hear that we had a good quality project that came in under budget and under time.
Thank you. Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman Elvin?
No discussion.
I just want to thank the city manager for, when we discovered the issue and the length of time it would take to pave the subdivision. And then also, we wanted to keep the aesthetics. And Councilman Gillette, you know, when he was the mayor, he worked, you know, knew we had an issue in there. Last term, we knew we had an issue and I requested us try to do some of it in-house to keep the aesthetics and go back with the square, the concrete due to the asphalt, the cost and how long it would take for them to get any kind of assistance in there and get completed. So we were able to find the funding. And thank you, Mark, for your engineering services. Thank the city staff and the contractor. As Councilman Gillette said, I echo him and Councilman College, the workmanship, they got in there, they got it done. And then a great timely fashion and great quality. So I hope that, and we've heard nothing but positive from the neighbors during the construction and after. So thank you all who worked on that project.
We have a motion by Councilman Gillette, a second by Councilman College. All in favor? Councilman Jackson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number two, approval of the docket of claims. We've all been provided them by our city clerk and comptroller, Ms. Montgomery, and they were online on the website attached for review also. Do we have a motion to approve the?
Any citizen comments?
Any citizen comments? I'm sorry. No. Do we have a motion by council?
Make a motion. We approve the docket claim provided that all entries there are true, correct, properly entered and not fraudulent.
We have a motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George. Any discussions? Start with Councilman George. Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman Gillette?
No comment.
Councilman College?
No comment.
Councilman Anderson?
No comment.
Councilman Elvin?
No comment.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to our consent agenda. They're approved in one motion unless a board member wants to pull one. Approval of minutes from the recess council meeting held July 18th, 2023. Approval to retain Butler Snow LLP to prepare and submit the city of Gochee's fiscal year 2022 financial disclosure statement. Three, receive June 2023 finance report. Four, authorization to enter into a memorandum of agreement, M O A, with the Mississippi Bureau of Narcotics, the Mississippi Gulf Coast High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area to accept the 2023 H R D T A grant. Five, authorization to accept monetary donations for the city of Gochee's Cruising Through the Decades event. Six, authorization to execute any and all documents necessary to obtain House Bill 603, 2023 regular legislative session. Funds to assist the city of Gochee with construction of the Mississippi Songwriters Performing Arts Center. Eight, authorization to?
Six.
Six, I'm sorry. Authorization to execute any and all documents necessary to obtain House Bill 603, 2023 regular legislative session. Funds to assist the city of Gochee with improvements to the Town Commons Park. Seven, authorization to execute any and all documents necessary to obtain House Bill 603, 2023 regular legislative session. Funds to assist the city of Gochee with construction of the Mississippi Songwriters Performing Arts Center. And eight, authorization to execute any and all documents necessary to obtain House Bill 603, 2023 regular legislative session. Funds to assist the city of Gochee to construct an inclusion and ADA approved park area. Do we have any, one want to pull any of the items? Do we have a motion to approve consent one through eight?
So move.
We have a motion by Councilman College to approve consent agenda items one through eight. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George. All in favor? Councilman Jackson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Chief. That brings us to citizen comments, our study agenda. You have three minutes to come to the podium, state your first and last name and your address. During citizen comments, if anyone's talking, we're going to respect everybody. No talking. Giggling, laughing, making noises. We're all adults and we all give everybody the right to speak. If you giggle, laugh, talk, whatever, the deputy's going to tap you on the back and say, "Come on." That's your warning. So you will then be asked to leave. We're not going to disrupt the meeting. So our first up is Billy Booth.
Billy Booth, 1405 Hill Crest Street, No Sheen, 44, resident. Good evening. In the last council meeting, I was, I asked about the status of the Martin Bluff Whiting project. We was given an answer that to no part of the city the project has encountered a snag. And I'm hoping today in the council, councilman comments, that someone can give us more clarity about this snag as to what specifically is happening as well as what is it going to take, what needs to happen for the project to restart. Also, on the last meeting, we heard another comment wanting us to move on from talking about the racial Facebook comment, post that was on Facebook page attributed to Councilman Anderson. As I said, we've said in the beginning of this matter, and I'll say again, we are in this situation because the way Councilman Anderson has handled it, had it been me, I would have shown my files and everything immediately. Thankfully, Councilman Anderson finally stated in the last meeting that he is going to show his Facebook files to N of H C P Vice President Richard Jackson. So I want to publicly thank him for agreeing to do this. This is all we wanted, is that we want to see verifiable proof that your Facebook page was hacked. We want to collaborate with your attorney presented to us on May 2nd. It is my understanding that this meeting has not happened yet, so I'm asking if Councilman Anderson will please have this meeting drive to our next council meeting so that the evidence can be seen by someone else. In conclusion, I want to concur with Mayor Vaughn that just because people are talking and commenting to the meeting, highlighting this racial posts, it doesn't mean that we are, these citizens hate this city or want this city to fail. I personally was brought from the hospital home to Gochee and have lived here 80% of my life, where rather than 20% have been in college. I love Gochee and I alone with so many want Gochee to succeed. But if you don't know already, this matter concerning this racial Facebook post is not going away until it is handled in the proper manner. And so I'm calling on Councilman Anderson to handle this by proving that he has been hacked or to resign. I'm asking you to handle this for your health's sake, for your family's sake, and for the city's sake. Because the more you prolong it, the worse it's going to get.
Thank you, Mr. Booth. Ms. Laura Smith?
I'm Laura Smith, and I live at 1320 Catita. And I am concerned about Martin Bluff project. I would like to know who the engineering firm is and who is the road contractor that's supposed to be working on Martin Bluff? And then what is exactly is the problem with Mississippi Department of Transportation and the engineering firm and the contractor that has stopped contracting or stop working? And there's a rumor, and so this is a rumor, but may as well ask, that there are no funds left, that we have to go back to the state for funds.
That's false.
That's right. Anyway.
It's a rumor.
It is a rumor.
But sometimes they can be true.
It's false.
And then the other thing is, well, he covered it. What is the estimated time for start and finish? And the other thing is, it's just a statement that this road's been a mess for 10-plus years. And it's an embarrassment. I cannot imagine living on that road. We have friends who live there that we go visit, and it's hard, hard, hard on our cars to go occasionally. I can't imagine going down that road every single day to go to work or school or whatever. And even before they started this mess, tearing the road up, the road was in bad shape with potholes and mess. And we were told, well, there's no sense fixing it because we're going to tear it up. But then it didn't happen for five years or more. This is a really big embarrassment for the city and especially for our area town because people have to try to every single day. Probably.
I can respond briefly.
Do I have more time?
With regards to, the contractor is Gulf Breeze Construction. The engineer is Baker International.
Is who?
Baker International. It used to be Baker Group, but they're Baker International. And their office is at Ocean Springs. And then with regards to where we are on the status, I'm going to have to relay that to our city manager, our city attorney, because there's potential litigation may be involved.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Sheila Coleman, 82712, Cali, Hermosa. I'm here to talk about something that happened at the last meeting. At the last meeting, a woman got a, I don't know her name. And she said that she was offended that the council continued to let people harass Councilman Anderson, a person she doesn't know. She went on to say that it was an embarrassment and that this had to stop. She said, "Y'all are sitting here telling us to represent, you represent us and complacently telling us that there is nothing you can do but say in his defense." She was appalled that we would continue to call out this man that she doesn't know on the posts that were credited to his Facebook page. She insists that the council member should be fired up in his defense. This man she doesn't know. She seems to imply that the mayor stopping someone from using the N-word in the city council meeting is something that should be applauded. The Mayor Vaughn insists that racist language will not be tolerated and a council meeting is above his job requirements, something that she deserves a pat on the back. She says she's calling all y'all, I don't know who we are that she's referring to, that we're calling on all y'all to stop people from picking on this man. This man she doesn't know. What he showed is cut and paste a great post aboard knockup that was presented at the board meeting should be enough proof that this man that she doesn't know to stop these attacks. The appearance of Westgate and Oak Grove and Martin Bluff. These are the things that are more important than letting citizens voice their opinions about these city council members alleged posts where he uses the N-word and wishes death to black people. Mayor Casey, she insists that you put a stop to this, an attack on this man, this man she doesn't know. Then she parades her black relatives that are offended by this post, which further confuses me. She stood up here and demanded and insisted that people requesting his resignation of a man she doesn't know needs to stop. She implied being called the N-word by council members who said he didn't do it and offered flimsy proof he didn't should be enough of a discussion of this issue. I guess her black relatives should just go on being offended and silent. From what I can ascertain from her comments, she doesn't know Councilman Anderson. But there's just something that they have in common that makes her want to defend him. As a citizen, she wants us to stop. She is tired of hearing about racist posts that the man she doesn't know may or may not have come from his page. She's tired of hearing about racism on the Gochee City Council. And y'all need to make people stop talking about it. Well, if she is tired of hearing about racist language, if she is fed up with being exposed to hearing about racism.
Your time's up, Mr. Coleman.
Maybe she should consider how tired we are of being subjected to it.
Mr. Charles Moore?
My name is Charles Moore. I live at 1920 Westgate Parkway, Gochee, Mississippi. Councilman Anderson said Reverend Booth didn't show him, didn't thank him for winning the election. Reverend Booth came up here and showed, gave him the paper once and showed that he thanked you. Congratulations, you said he didn't call. He said he called, he brought a paper cover. But you hadn't showed that you didn't say what you said. So you need to resign right now.
Thank you. Ms. Della Moore?
Della Moore, 1920 Westgate Parkway, Gochee. We need to get some microphones up here because some people, boys, don't care as well. Now, when he was talking, he felt so comfortable in telling us, "Don't shake your head," that's his character. He gonna tell a grown person, "I'm shaking my head." He said, "Don't shake your hand," that's part of his character. Also, in the term "you people," we asked him before, not to constantly use that word "you people." He feels so freely in speaking like that. That gave you a glimpse into his character, who he really is. Like I said, he is not proven anything. And I want to clear this up. When I say, "Because you go to church on Sunday and it's on Monday," that does not mean that I don't love the Lord. I love the Lord, and I'm gonna do rights. And I'm gonna treat people right. And you know you have a faith in others. I'm just wondering, how long we gonna have to keep coming to you for the same thing over and over and over again? Sit there being very defined, it's okay because we're not going anywhere. Thank you.
Mr. Claude Stubbs?
Claude Stubbs, 2501, Bayou Man Road, here in Gochee. Today I come about, I continue to have water bill problems. I have a pool that was, that was redone a couple of years ago and I ended up with some atrocious water bill that we came to a conclusion on getting it resolved. And about a month ago, or two months ago, we had an issue where, you know, the water bill went up. It's only my wife and I that lives in the house. Yes, I have a daughter that comes down from a ladder and down there. But with that, with her and her son, we don't use, you know, $400 worth of water in a month. And this has been ongoing. I also ended up having to pay 10 years back for some rental properties that I had for some water bills that they said hadn't been resolved. And I resolved those and resolved those for about $360. And then two weeks later, I get another $300-something dollar water bill for all this water that we're supposed to use. And the only thing I ask is maybe, and I don't know how it would transpire, would you like the power company? Tell me how much water I'm using per day so I can follow up. Because I come to you and say, "How much water did I use?" Well, this is what, you know, the reading. Then I asked about the meeting, and they said, "Well, this still hasn't been working. We have people coming out and checking." There's a little flaw with that. And I'm the one that's saying, because if I don't pay a bill, then I gotta catch up with late charges. Now I got the late charge, the argument with the water usage and everything. And it keeps going up and up and up and up. To me, that's unfair. So if you got a system, make the system work for the customer. I mean, I understand, you know, I use water, but I didn't ask for a pool bill or anything like that. So just do something about this water bill. Because for me, it's killing me. It's once a year I got a water bill issue, and I shouldn't have that. Whether I have a pool, whether I wash 15 cars, or whatever, I shouldn't have that. That's all I have to say. So please, take a look at the water bill system or whatever because a lot of people suffer with these water bills.
Thank you, Mr. Stubbs. Lindsey Miller?
I've got questions. I'm not sure if this is a question and answer session, but House Bill 603, is that Mississippi House? Is that?
Mr. Miller, we're gonna let you go ahead and speak and ask all your questions so we don't waste your three minutes. And then we will respond back.
All right. Is that a Mississippi House bill? Is that a United States House Representative's bill? And are the funds on these three projects here seem to be all part of House, House Bill 603? So what I was wondering is, if everything is lumped together, when you ask for funds for projects, what is the city's responsibility as far as funds? Do they have to match a certain amount of funds? Or, I mean, how do you, you know, how do you get to that, that point where you apply for the funds and then? Does the legislature approve the funds per project? Or is it all lumped together?
Is that all the question? Yeah. Is that all you're gonna speak on, Mr. Lindsey?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, Ms. Jancy. Ms. Jancy, our city manager will answer here. Come.
So House Bill 603 is about a thousand pages. And there are line items in there. And it wasn't just the city of Gochee. The city of Haskin Gula, the city of Ocean Springs, cities, I can't even remember all the names of. And so they'll have a line item so much to the city of Gochee for, let's say, the inclusion playground. Each one of these things you see on here under House Bill 603 is a separate line item appropriation. They can only be used for what that line item says. There is no match. It's through what's called D F A, Department of Finance and Administration. So the legislature approved it at the end of the last legislative session. So what happens then is their fiscal year begins in July. So the Department of Finance and Administration will submit these memorandum agreements where we are agreeing to use these funds for these specified purposes. And once we execute that and send it to them, we have to have a separate bank account for each project. And they will wire those funds to that bank account. And we have to keep them separate and account for them separately. And they can't be spent on anything else. But there is no match. Did I answer all your questions?
Is that state legislature?
And just to piggyback on top of that, each year, the city council submits half dozen to a dozen projects that we're looking for funding on. And we'll lobby to try to get these projects funded. We'll meet with our legislators and so forth. And some will get through, like some of these ones. Some of them, they'll get cut at the last second. But we submitted quite a few projects this year. We got three of them submitted for sure on this 603 appropriation. We're hoping to get some future funding on other projects also.
Okay. So on I M A, what is an inclusion park area?
An inclusion playground is a playground where kids that are on the spectrum can play on the same equipment with kids that are not on the spectrum. It is a huge tourist attraction. And I was approached by a private donor because they were building one in Metairie that agreed to donate money to this playground. And so basically, it's a playground where if you're in a wheelchair, you can get up on the, you know how they have the thing you climb up on and the slides, you can get up and do that. You can do everything on the playground. Or if you're, you know, me, they're leaving on, why do they call it a quiet house? Where if you need to get away, it's kind of where you can sit and calm down.
Autism spectrum?
Yes.
All spectrum, yeah, all spectrum.
All spectrum.
Any child.
Uh, where if you need to get away, it's kind of where you can sit and call down.
Autism spectrum?
Yes.
All spectrum, yeah, all spectrum.
All spectrum.
Any child-
And it's ADA compliant.
Well, most, uh, parts are ADA compliant?
No, I mean, even the playground equipment is ADA compliant. You can do things on this playground you can't do on normal ones.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to our council comments, we'll start with Councilman George.
I have no comments tonight. Thank you.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Thank you for representing us in the River City.
You're welcome.
Councilman Delott?
No comment.
Councilman College?
Is there a status that we can provide on the Martin Bluff Road widening project at this time? Are we still in the fact finding stages for potentially moving forward or our stance on?
Well, I, there's not really anything we can say, other than it's a matter of potential litigation. There are some conflicts, certainly not inconclusive, and we are attempting to resolve those. So as soon as I know if they're resolved or we're having to take further action, we can give the citizens enough.
I tried.
City Attorney, you got anything to add to that?
Yes, sir.
That's all I have.
Councilman Anderson?
Yeah, the Martin Bluff Road is turning into a nightmare, so I'm getting flaccid with it. The entire construction project is in my ward. I'm telling people what I know. It's deteriorating to the point of, on the south lane, it's deteriorating and falling into the, is almost the point of falling into the, that four foot, five foot ditch on the south side. Where the ditches are crossing the road that they cut across to feed, there's a big hole like a pond on the north side in three places. The new cover comes onto the road, dumping into an old dirt ditch, and the dirt is deteriorating away. They put some temporary, the, the, uh, silt, silt fence up there is falling apart, falling apart. All the way, the entire project down through there, silt fence is falling apart. But there's three places that the road is eroding to the point, we get a nine, eight or nine, ten inch rain, there's not gonna be a south lane anymore. It's, it's that bad. And I, whether the engineering firm is responsible, or the contractor that walked out is responsible, or the city's responsible, I don't know, but somebody seriously needs to take a look at that south lane and those three ditches crossing.
I can get the engineer to go look at it, I, you remember, the potholes were refused to be built, and I had, had to go through a certain process in the contract to follow the contract, but I did, I was able to do that and have them filled. I will tell you that I do know they had, can't remember the word, I don't even have to help me. MBEQ, they failed the, whatever, they come out with spec on the-
Oh, yeah, the construction best management practices or the stormwater prevention practice.
Yes, and, um, they have been-
Who failed?
The contract.
Oh, he failed, he don't have a bad title.
So we have asked them repeatedly to take care of those erosion controls. At one point, they said they did, but they would, but I don't know what happened after that. But I will get the engineer to go look at what you're talking about and see if I can use the same procedure under that contract to at least do something to, to rarely stabilize it or resolve the problem.
Thank you, it needs to look at this seriously. We may not get a five to ten inch rain, but if we do, it's, it's about ready to fall off into that ditch. Okay, um, Mr. Booth, with all due respect, this was not my Facebook page that this was put on. I, I've told this over and over and over, everybody keeps saying it was my Facebook page. That remark was not on my Facebook page. It was on a Facebook page, I don't even know the man. And about, um, you wanting something by the next meeting, Mr. Louis Jackson and I have discussed, me looking into, uh, he sent me some information, I'm trying to figure out how to get to the bottom of this, where I could prove my innocence, and I'm looking at that, but that's not gonna happen, I'm afraid, by the next meeting. By the time I get with attorneys and we look at everything and IP people, IT people, and look at it all, I, I'm afraid it won't happen by the next meeting. And I'm gonna look at it and try to discuss this with folks and get it pushed as, as fast as I can. And that's all I can promise at this time. But I, I can't promise it by the next meeting. Ms. Coleman's, I wanted to tell you that that comment was not on my Facebook page. That was not my Facebook page. And I, I have my Facebook files, and they're gonna be looked at. Mr. Louis Jackson is, is gonna possibly look at them with me, an attorney. And, uh, these, these Facebook files show every comment I've made everywhere. Everybody that I'm associated with or friends with on Facebook, it shows every comment that I made. And we're gonna look at that, and we're looking into the other thing that Mr. Jackson sent me the information to, trying to get to the bottom of this. Mr. Moore, he thanked us through a paper, newspaper post, and he thanked us all as a group. He didn't thank me, and it is individually. But I did talk to Mr. Booth and told him I'm gonna take his word for it that he called me. Though there's no proof of it, we don't have any phone proof, I don't remember it. There's a lot of things I don't remember, Mr. Booth.
He broke-
Or Mr. Moore, Mr. Moore, but, but I'm gonna take, give Mr. Booth's word for it that he called me and congratulated me. And I then talked to Mr. Booth about that and told him that I was taking his word for it. Ms. Moore, when I said you people, I'm, I'm talking about you folks in this meeting. I'm not talking about you people out there in the world, or in Gojae, Mississippi, or Jackson County. I was talking about you folks in this meeting, attending this meeting. That's what I meant by that. Ms. Stubbs, I would like to take a look at your pool and your water bill. See here, still here? You're in my ward, and I'd like to, I'd like to take a look at that one day and just try to figure out what's going on there and help you out there if I could. If, if you, if you don't mind, I, I know where you live, and I don't have your information, but if you could give it to me, I could call you and maybe run up there one day. You live about an eighth of a mile from me. Kind of missed everyone, just I like that.
Thank you, Councilman Anderson. Councilman Alvin?
Ms. Paula, we, I know earlier in the week we discussed the issue of the wake zone in the Singer River, Singer River, the river, and up there in Hickory Hills area. I spoke to the attorney, he's gonna get that information so we can spread it across the council so they're aware what we're talking about in the coming meetings. So, what we're talking about, coordinates and where we needed the zone at. So we're gonna draft something, I guess, later, at a later date, so the rest of the council can be informed of what we're discussing. And other than that, I'd like to thank all the employees of the city, because we couldn't do without you. Thanks for all you do, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Alvin.
I just wanna, um, thank Councilman Jackson and Count, um, Chastity Bilbo, our Parks and Rec Director, and the volunteer of the nonprofit group, this past Saturday had a job fair at Becco Park. Um, and then also thank the Boys and Girls Club for partnering and letting us use their facility there at Becco Park, um, to hold the job fair. But it was a great day, over a hundred and twenty-five, um, people came through looking for a job. So kudos to them. Also, as you see, some of our local businesses are struggling to find people to work. So if you know somebody looking for a job, there's people, businesses in our own city posting on social media every day looking for help. So if anybody you know is jobless, needs a job, they should be able to find one. And if you need help helping them, you can reach out. Any of us, myself or any council member should be able to point you in the right direction. Um, or our city staff, they could point you in the right direction. Also, I wanna thank our, um, planning department, they did a great job installing, um, the new city seal on the city hall building outside. It looks great, and the heat, y'all did a great job installing that today, so thank you all, if you'll let your employees know. Once again, we stated earlier, I did, where Councilman Jackson is. I just wanna again thank the police chief and his department for a great job, and remind, remind everybody to look at social media, our page, the police department page, Parks and Rec page. There's a lot going on, there's a lot of volunteerism with our youth that you could be a part of if you wanna volunteer. And I ask that you consider to get involved, because it is important, our children are our future. Schools started back, they're all excited, they got a lot going on, the band's gonna kick off. Support your high school, your middle school, your elementary, um, support them. They all have Facebook pages, and they all have very good information out there. Um, so think about the teachers and our educators also. Um, I hope you all have a great week, thank you for everybody coming, and once again, and we thank you, Ms. Smith, for saying that it was a rumor, because as you heard tonight, it is a rumor. We do have the funds, so we thank you. The Martin Bluff Road project, I know it's aggravating, um, we all drive it. We go up and down Martin Bluff Road two, and it, it would do us, if we could do it overnight, we would do it. Um, but unfortunately, we've ran through some hurdles, but the city staff, the city attorney, both, um, people are working, the contractor and the engineer and them got, gonna all work together to try to get the best resolution, um, for all parties involved. I can tell you when the first project was bidded out, um, in the, that bid, they were to be able to overlay, so you would have a nice paved road during construction. But the cost was so high on that bid, we had to go out and rebid the project again. So that's why it didn't get overlaid during construction, just, but that was thought about, but the funding was not there to allow that to happen. So we understand your frustration, and we are working the fastest and best we can to get it resolved.
Mayor Vasquez, one thing.
Yes, Mr.-
The Martin Bluff Road?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Ms. City Manager, Paula, um, they did do a great job on repairing the potholes. They did a good job, whoever did it, their water-
Their water.
They did a good job, a great job. I went over it in my truck, twenty-five, thirty miles an hour, no problem. But my concern was the erosion into that ditch, which, which is the three foot extension they laid over there that they gonna take back up, because it's more into that, that three foot or four foot extension of asphalt. What it's doing, it's working its way up to the original road end. That's all, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Anderson. Hope you all have a great week, and, um, thank all of our staff for all they do. That brings us to our city manager comments, Ms. Shanks? Our city clerk, Ms. Montgomery? Our city attorney, Mr. Dennis?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a motion to recess until August the fifteenth, twenty twenty-three at six thirty PM?
Sure do.
Motion by Councilman Delott? Do a second by Councilman George, all in favor? Councilman Jackson? Councilman Jackson?
Aye.
Motion, thank you, motion carries, word, recess.